Good evening, I call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you'll please stand for invocation and pledge. And rest assured, we know the seven o'clock train is on time tonight.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and this opportunity. Well, thank you for this gathering at the seat of government of Cartersville, Georgia. We wish you to come down and be with us during discussions and voting and guide us in the right direction that we should go, that all the citizens of Cartersville will be satisfied that the job being done. It's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Drake, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward one.
Here.
Jay Step, Ward two. Terry Roth, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward five. Tafran, Ward six.
Thank you, Julia. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from April 6th. Counsel, I wasn't here to tell you whether those minutes are right or wrong. So y'all can make any edits, or if they're the way they're supposed to be, a motion's in order.
Mr. Cooley did a great job in the last meeting, and I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
I'll approve them as well. It passes unanimously. We have an appointment this evening. Mr. Porter, get us started, please.
Yes, Mayor. Beth Tilly and Mike Fields are in the Development Authority and would like to continue serving. If approved, their new terms will expire May 11, 2027.
And that is the Cartersville Development Authority, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote the affirmative as well. Motion carries unanimously. Parks and Recreation Ordinance update.
Yes, Mayor. This is the second reading of the update of the Parks and Recreation Ordinance regarding hours, prohibiting drones, paragliders, and metal detector, and adding more definitions to the disorderly conduct sections of the Parks and Recreation Ordinance.
Same wording as first reading?
Same wording as last meeting, and as recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any discussion on this item? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote the affirmative as well. Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of several ordinances tonight. Ms. Reed, why don't you get us started on the amendment to the alcohol ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. The Downtown Development Authority is requesting an amendment to the alcohol ordinance in order to add a wine and craft beer tasting room is a permitted type of business within the downtown district. So this has been presented to the DDA Board, and they do recommend approval of this amendment. The amendment would allow businesses in this designation to have 75% of their sales for wine and malt beverages for consumption on premises, and will require at least 25% of the sales for retail purposes, including packaged sales for off-premise consumption. It's a new definition modeled from tasting room provisions made for wineries and breweries already existing within the state. And it does have a similar structure to an existing downtown business, which is Drown Valley Brewing, which itself only sells malt beverages for consumption on premise, as well as retail package sales. This new business type would not be permitted to sell any distilled spirits, nor would they be permitted to establish this type of business outside of the downtown business district. Package stores are prohibited in the downtown business district. So we did expand also the definition of retail package store to sort of reflect and reinforce that language, you know, as we're expanding for the additional definition.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Reed on this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Randy or anybody on staff? While any discussion needs to take place amongst council on this first reading?
That... Remind me about the food, the percentage that 45% of its gross annual sales be derived from sales of prepared meals or food? Or is that not? Is that number eight?
So this would exempt...
If you'd come back up so that we can get it all recorded and everything?
These provisions would actually exempt them from the customary split of food and beverage sales.
Okay. That's what I was... All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this item? We will move along. Again, no need to vote on this tonight. We'll take this up for consideration on our first meeting on the first Thursday of May, which is May the 4th.
Be with me.
That's right. All right. Mr. Lovell, you have the next several. We'll take them individually, although you may want to explain them all and...
I think I will just offer an explanation on all of them, and if y'all have questions about them. Basically, for the Alcohol Control Board, Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals, we do not have any attendance policies for members on those boards. And we thought it would be prudent to establish some attendance policies. And basically, it mirrors those of the city council, though it is one less meeting. It's basically, if they miss three meetings in a row without calls, they can be removed from the board. And that is recommended for your approval for both the Alcohol Control Board, Planning Commission, Historic Preservation, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Though, just to remind you, on the Board of Zoning Appeals, you do need to have a public hearing before you read that particular ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So the first one we'll take up is the one relative to the Alcohol Control Board. Again, is there any questions for staff or any discussion need to have on that attendance ordinance?
Is there any kind of warning to the members within close?
It is not contained in the ordinance, so the procedures we plan to put in place will give them notice when they miss two meetings in a row that they are potentially going to miss their third.
So without mind the council...
All these boards were presented with these ordinances also, so they were aware of it. We get a designation up here.
So the council will not appoint at that individual? Will he get notice?
We will make that part of the policy as well.
And the way we've been handling this, we changed all the boards to seven-member boards. Each one of us gets an appointee.
Right.
So obviously, if it happened to be your appointee, you would get to pick the next one and bring it to council for approval.
Right.
Kind of like we currently do.
Or call your appointee and tell him to show up?
That'd be good, too. All right, so that handles the Alcohol Control Board. Same thing for the Planning Commission. Any discussion or questions about that? Again, this is the first reading of ordinance. We'll read it a second time on May 4th. Same animal for the Historic Preservation Commission. Any discussion or questions about that? We will move along, and I'll open up a public hearing relative to this ordinance as it pertains to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for, against, or make comment on it can step forward and do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for the Board of Zoning Appeals attendance ordinance first reading, and ask council if there's any questions of staff or amongst council that we need to talk about before we move along. And again, all these will be up for consideration at our meeting on May the 4th. We'll move on to first reading of zoning and annexation requests. Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started with AZ 23-01.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This property and the case following it, they all have been properly posted and advertised and reviewed based on the standards in our zoning ordinance, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest. This first one is located at 226 East Felton Road. The applicant is desiring to annex it into the city jurisdiction, I believe, for the city school system. They do have, I believe, they do have a child in the city school system. With that, the city did review it. We got no objections from the city departments that reviewed the annexation and zoning request to the R-20 zoning district. The school system had no comments, and Bortow County reviewed it, had no comments. They did have a comment, but did not object to it. They did note that the adjacent property probably could not be annexed because it would create a donut hole down below it. That was noted, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of the annexation to the single-family residential zoning district of R-20.
I'm sorry, should I ask this in work session? Is that, Logan, is, can that slide, is that just a slide, or can you move up on the map on that? It's a slide? Never mind then. Okay.
Yeah. If you moved it up, you would see that there is...
It's Moore County, or is it city?
It's city. It'll create, all down below it. So if you annex the adjacent parcel to the one in blue,
Right.
it encloses an area, and by state law, we can't enclose that area.
Sure. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Manino at this time? Thank you. We'll have two public hearings relative to this request at a first reading. I'll open up the public hearing for the annexation portion of the request, and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for, against, to do so at this time.
Mayor, we want to do the zoning first.
Excuse me. Yes, I wrote it wrong. The zoning portion request for AZ 23-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for, against, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing and open a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request, 23... AZ 23-01. And again, ask anybody wishing to speak for, against, to step forward at this time? And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing as well. And again, this will be up for another public hearing and council consideration at our May 4th meeting. Mr. Manino, get us started on SU 23-01, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a special use permit request. What it is is for the expansion of a non-conforming use. The non-conforming use being a used car facility, which are technically not allowed in that zoning district along Tennessee Street. It is existing. It is allowed to continue. To expand requires a special use permit to expand a non-conforming use. With that, Duncan Auto Sales is looking to lease the adjacent property just north of their existing facility. It had an existing two or three-car bay garage that the auto repair was previously done at. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of allowing this special use permit. Just for the record, you did hear a request to expand this facility back in 2018. They located or leased the property at 306 Johnson Street. There was a single-family house on there. It was a bit dilapidated. It was torn down and removed. They don't operate on that. I believe they have their employee parking at that location. I think it's just gravel had been paved, and there's no buildings on that particular parcel. But this one is for 403 North Tennessee Street. Again, Planning Commission did recommend approval.
So you jogged my memory when you said that. Is it, did they have to, was part of that expansion of the non-conforming use at 306, was part of that allowing the gravel lot? Because I know that typically, they're required to be paved. Is that correct?
Yeah, the required amount of parking for any facility is required to be paved. Overflow can be gravel. They meet the required minimum parking for their facility. In the future, if it's developed, it would have to be paved, and stormwater management would kick in. It would have to comply with our stormwater requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Manino at this time?
I'm just trying to get my bearings. On the very bottom left, that's where the Ford dealership is now?
Yeah, 401. You see the 401? That's where existing Duncan Auto Sales is located. They do lease the property at 306 Johnson Street also. And again, that's utilized for employee parking.
Yeah, the Ford dealership is across the street, Catawba.
That's correct.
Correct. And 403, it was, like I said previously, an auto repair garage, two or three bays. They're looking to be able to utilize the existing base for their purposes and have overflow onto 403 if necessary.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for SU 23-01, and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for, against, to do so at this time. And you were naming your address for our clerk, please.
Yes, Bobby Walker, 15 South Public Square. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Duncan Auto Sales. This is Nick Duncan here, in the blue shirt, white hat. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be very brief. Certainly will answer any questions that you all may have. Based on this map, as we point out, that 306 lot that we talked about, as previously mentioned, that was, is again, used for parking for the employees. Also, some of the customers will park there. The 401 lot, which is sort of the corpus or the main portion of the business, is very small. It's .14 acres. And so, the 306 lot is .12 acres. And so, the current total of the property there is .26 acres. The 403 lot is also .14 acres. And so, that would create a total of .4 acres that this business would operate on if it were, if this were approved. It would also create, instead of where they now have this L-shaped lot, it would create a rectangle and would be, you know, a little more useful for their business. The use will be used, or that property will be used. It is, there is a three-car or three-bay garage there that was previously used as a repair facility for the public. Mr. Duncan will not, this will not be used for public repairs. It will only be used to service and repair vehicles that he purchases to get them ready for sale to his customers. And he anticipates that that garage will probably only be used approximately 10 to 12 hours a week. The parking lot in front of it will accommodate somewhere between five to 12 vehicles. It will be used in overflow parking. Just the nature of a car dealership is he will go and purchase vehicles at a sale or an auction. And so, he may purchase 10 or 12 vehicles at a time, and will have those come in at once, and they will be sold. And, you know, he may have the need to have that overflow parking that you keep hearing about. A couple of things to point out. I know in the staff report, there was a mention of another special use permit that was approved a couple of years back, just down the street, for Randy Wimpy at 414, and then on to 416 and 420 North Tennessee Street. If you're familiar with that property, that's just north on Tennessee Street, just past the Napa Auto Parts. That property's a good bit larger than ours. It's a .62 acre tract. Again, ours is, would be .4 acres. The Pugmire dealership is, of course, across the street, as Councilmember Hodge pointed out. It's a 5.5 acre tract. We have the former Kia dealership right down the road, which is a two-and-a-half acre tract. And then Charles Hudson's used car lot is just south on Tennessee Street, just on the south side of Johnson Street. And it's a one-acre lot altogether. And so, you know, there won't be cars going and coming. You know, we won't have the public pulling in and out of 403. So we don't believe there'll be any negative effect to traffic there. There aren't any residential uses that are adjacent to the north there. It's City Pond. Again, to the east is the lot, the 306 lot, which is used for our parking, for customers and employees. And of course, we have commercial on both the west and the south side as well. In terms of business hours, again, you know, our business is, the business itself is operated Monday through Friday from 9:30 to 5:30. It isn't open at all on Saturdays and Sundays, except by appointment. And we don't anticipate the garage portion will be operated at all on the weekends. Both staff have not opposed the application, and of course, the Planning Commission recommended the approval 5 to nothing. So we would ask the council to approve the application. We think it makes sense. We think it's actually an improvement over what could be located there. The way that Mr. Duncan proposes to use the property, we think would be an improvement over a traditional repair facility. Again, he's not going to have cars that are in a state of disrepair, that are broken down, parked out front. You know, he's not going to have used car parts or tires or things. He's going to have nice cars there parked for sale. And so, are there any questions that anybody has?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank y'all.
Again, public hearing for SU 23-01. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for, against, may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 23-01. This will be taken up for another public hearing and council vote on May the 4th. We will move on to contracts and agreements. Mr. Morgan, get us started, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We're asking approval. What you have on the board is the firing range. And the Carterville Police Department is looking to replace the existing structure. And what you have, the yellow area, is a superimposed area of the layout of the new building. We need to get geotechnical work to look at the soil and see how we want to manage that. It's in the floodplain area. We're asking your approval for this with GeoHydro up to $6,000.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? If not, motions in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
I'll vote for the affirmative as well. It carries unanimously. Thank you, Freddie. Mr. Lovell, you have the next item, please. Right of entry, CO 64.
Yes, Mayor. This is a right of entry for the three properties on the city property of the Dellinger Park, for them to go back there and clear up debris and dead trees. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
I'll vote for the affirmative as well. Motion passes. Actual cost agreement and resolution, Mr. Dixon. While Mr. Dixon's making his way up, council, I'll entertain a motion to add two items to the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
I agree, so we'll have two items added. Go ahead, Michael.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On September 15, 2022, council approved entering into an actual cost utility agreement with GDOT, where they agreed to reimburse the city a portion of the cost associated with the relocation of existing natural gas facilities within an easement in conflict with the State Route 293, Kingston Highway Dykes Creek Road construction project. GDOT has since revised the actual cost agreement by adding language associated with the Buy America requirements of the federal regulations of the Build America/Buy America Act. The gas system recommends council's approval for the city to enter into this revised actual cost utility agreement with GDOT in a reimbursable amount of 9.82% of the total construction cost associated with the relocation of the existing natural gas facilities, estimated to be approximately $28,614.99. The gas system also recommends council's approval of the resolution authorizing city clerk and mayor to execute the agreement.
Any questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
I will vote the affirmative as well. It carries 4-0. Go ahead, Michael. Oh, you're, oh, you got, you're done?
Done.
There you go. How about that? We're going to bring Freddie back up here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We come before you tonight asking for approval to purchase two vehicles from Levonia Ford for the gas department in a total amount of $106,761. They were listed as Ed Murdock, but their legal name is Levonia Ford. And then additionally, we're asking for approval to purchase a vehicle from Green Ford in Gainesville, 2023 F-150 for stormwater in the amount of $55,000.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Morgan on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve. A second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Carter, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring before you tonight first a budgeted item. This is a project that's within our current budget. This is for a replacement of an air compressor system that provides breathing air for our firefighters for the SCBA since they're aware of the hazardous environment. The current system that we have, the compressor and cascade system, has been online since 2002. It's getting extremely difficult to find parts, and it's simply time to replace the unit. The low quote that we're looking at this evening is going to be an Arctic compressor system. This is identical to the compressor systems utilized by the Georgia Fire Academy route currently, so it's a strong system. The low quote for the price for this project for the equipment is $57,606.7. We would ask to also add on the additional extended warranty, which will keep us a complete coverage for five years, which will assist us with obtaining parts. Also, this will bring us our total cost of $61,127.61. The vendor that we're asking for approval to purchase this from will be Municipal Equipment Company.
All right. Any questions for Chief on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
I'll vote in favor as well. It carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Next item.
Yes, sir. This is for an emergency repair for one of our fire trucks. This is engine four that generally runs out of the MLK station. Basically, we've had to rebuild the front end on this truck. And we're looking for approval to repair this truck at $10,054.60. This work is being done by 10-8 Fire and Safety, who is the Pierce manufacturer and repair authorized dealer for us for our fire trucks.
How far away is that, just out of curiosity?
It's actually in Cobb County.
Okay. Not too bad.
No, sir.
Good. All right. Any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for that as well. It carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Forsyth, you've got the next two, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item is a lift station pump repair for the sewer lift station on Main Street, east of I-75. It has two pumps currently. One pump has failed and is in need of either replacement or repair. We're recommending a repair of this pump for $46,882.92 due to the fact that we will be soon replacing the entire lift station, and the current pumps will not work in the new lift station. So we're just going to repair this one for now. It is a budgeted maintenance item and recommended for your approval.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote the affirmative. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yes, sir. The next item is the final adjustment change order, closeout change order for replacement switchgear at the 2400 bolt switchgear for two of our high-service pumps at the water treatment plant on the screen there. This was originally approved in July of 2021 due to manufacturing and supply chain logistics. It has just been completed. The approved cost was $384,660. The final price would be $334,660. And the $50,000 credit essentially is the unused contingencies within the contract. It's just recommended for your approval as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I will say, not just relative to the Water Department, but to all the departments. If you pay attention, a lot of times when we have these change orders, these final change orders, what happens is we're, it's not because things are going over, it's because things have cost less. And so, I just want to, I think that's important to note when you've got an organization that's consistently keeping an eye on public money and its resources. And so, I want to thank all the city staff and management for doing that. It's certainly a lot better. And certainly, there are times when things go over, when there's unforeseen things. But I think more often than not, we find ourselves with change orders that actually brings money back to the city. And so, just wanted to note that and let you know it's appreciated. Mr. Porter, you have the next item, please.
Yes, Mayor. Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter Grant Appasion. Every year, they come to us because they were looking to go to the state, the Department of Community Affairs, to make a request for grants, and they need our approval on that to apply for that grant. So I recommend approval of the letter to go with Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Kate, but saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for that. Motion carries unanimously. That first added item, Mr. Porter, is your... is yours.
Yes, Mayor. The last meeting, Mayor and Council approved looking for feasibility study for Mission Road, Cherokee Avenue to Burnt Hickory. And looking into it a little further, we found that the sidewalk ends about a quarter mile past Burnt Hickory. So we have gone to Wade Wilson's, worked with engineering firm Southeastern Engineering. And they have come back with proposal for seventeen thousand to do a feasibility study for Cherokee Avenue just past Burnt Hickory. It's recommended for your approval. It'll become from twenty twenty SPOS. It'll also, this agreement they're going to come for is that what they'll allow us to do is work to apply for a TAP grant and going forward. So they're going to be basically providing us information that allows to apply for grant application to help with that project in the future. So it's recommended for your approval.
Thank you for that. Is there any other discussion or questions on the item? Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to Capa saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote in favor as well. Carries unanimously. Mr. Lovell, you have a right of entry that you need us to take a look at.
Yes, Mayor. This is a right of entry with Ronnie Ponder. He owns some property the city needs to do some investigation on to determine whether or not we can put some more facilities on there. It is recommended by staff for approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Capa saying aye?
Aye.
And I'll vote for that. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt, I don't have to vote on your thing, but you're going to give us some good news with the money.
I'm not trying. Good evening, Admiral Mayor and Council. We're looking at the financial report for February two thousand twenty-three and comparing it to February two thousand twenty-two. The general fund revenues increased over last year by six point seven million, while the expenses increased eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Two areas of revenues I look at on a monthly basis are local office of sales tax have an increase there of about one point two million dollars. And billing permits and inspection fees increased there about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last February by two point nine million dollars. Expenses decreased by two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last February by eleven point one million dollars. Expenses increased by eight million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increases to the transfer to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by four point two million dollars. Expenses increased by three point seven million dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchases purchased gas, purchased gas, purchased electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last February by twenty-four thousand dollars. Expenses increased by twenty-one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues increased over last year by six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, while the expenses increased by four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by one point three million dollars. Expenses increased by one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased capital expenses, decreased debt service expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In our cash position for the month of February, total unrestricted cash balances increased, total unrestricted restricted cash balances also increased. And the SPOS fund accounts balances, SPOS two thousand three account is eleven thousand six eighteen sixteen. SPOS two thousand fourteen is two hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents. And SPOS twenty twenty is nine million eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Mayor, I do appreciate those comments you've made momentarily ago. Yes, Tom and his staff and all the department heads do look at that. And you could this financial report does show what we're doing. Every day, we try to make sure that we are spending taxpayers' money wisely and watching the revenues and expenses. So Tom, again, appreciate all your hard work and all the department heads working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on the financial report?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other business that needs to come for council this evening? And if you would, yeah, come on, we could do this. This is the time for that. If you would, please.
Okay.
If you would give your name and your address for our clerk, please, sir.
Thomas Butler, thirty-three Gaddish Road. And side note, I am the creator of the Support Our Troops Georgia Car Tag. So anytime I can kind of spread the info on that, I feel I need to do that. So my son has played Cartesville soccer at the Cartesville Soccer Complex behind the middle school since two thousand eighteen. He played rec ball. And then since two thousand twenty-one, he joined the SSA. I don't know if y'all are familiar with what the field conditions are, but they are pretty bad. There are dibbets all in the grass. It's pretty much mud. All the fields are painted. The chalk is covered with dirt. And if it sprinkles or rains the night before, we usually have to go to our tournament at another field, either in Atlanta, Buckhead, anywhere else that'll that'll take us. And then the SSA team usually practices at Lake Point on Thursday. The rec team usually handles the field at that point. But I guess the field conditions are so bad, they try to make it more comfortable for the SSA team. So I'm just kind of wanting to put a a feel out there to see, you know, what Cartesville could possibly do to help SSA in either adding turf to the field, either part of the field. I know trying to do all of it would be extremely expensive. So anything that could be done is is more than grateful. As a parent, I'm willing to go door to door to every business within the state of within the Cartesville to try to raise funds any way I can and, you know, do my part to help out as much as possible.
And where are you at now? Tell me again.
In Gaddish Road.
Gaddish.
It's north of four eleven intersection.
Okay.
So it is Cartesville, but not within the city limits.
So I don't know. Is this the gentleman that sent you the email? I want to thank you, number one, for bringing that to our case. Anyway, it was made aware through Councilman Ross. So appreciate that. And since then, we've we've realized that that's happened. And I know, Mr. Porter, you've got a plan of action on that, if you want to share that.
Yes, sir. I mean, obviously, thank you for bringing out that attention. We've had transitioned to Parks and Rec Director Steve Roberts. He's just his first week on the job.
Right.
Obviously, James Gordy, who's been with us for he retired from the city. He's been helping out. And we've done some things that we can do. What we where our anticipation is, as we go forward, you guys get done with your soccer season, because my understanding is you put some new sod down.
They did last summer.
And it didn't, whether things didn't get here to. And also, I know, because I live just across the way in subdivision area, and I know people are playing on weekends.
Right.
We've changed that. And because of transition from prior administration there, we didn't, they didn't stop playing. So we put up signs out there. So people aren't playing with part of the soccer association.
Right.
The use would be less. But as it gets to warmer, you know, gets that that sod gets out of dormancy, and you guys stop your so your season ends, we plan on getting in and air and aerate the fields and do some work to it. Hopefully, as you know, with the summertime, give us some more time.
Right.
We're we'll try to take some more action and get it in better shape. There's no plans right now for a turf field.
Sure.
But I mean, that's something we can discuss down the road. Like I said, Steve Roberts can talk with you afterwards. But he's like, so we're we're trying to make some headway into that.
Mm-hmm.
And we appreciate the input. And like I said, we'll try to help when we can, because we know, you know, obviously, we've tried to make sports available for anybody.
Right.
Fields in better condition. So hopefully, some of the steps we've taken are making headway. It'll take some time. It'll take past your current season.
Right.
Fix those things. And maybe by the fall, I'm not sure when your season actually starts, but maybe by the fall, it'll be in way better shape.
It ends, I believe, towards the end of May, and then starts back up around September, October.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to definitely take some action when your season ends. Like I said, aerate the fields. If we need to bring in some sand to, you know, make you let the grass grow.
Right.
Obviously, not cover it up, but just make some improvements there. So I'm not sure who the soccer association president is. But like I said, we'll be working with you guys to try to fix those fields for you.
Yeah, I was trying to get him to come tonight, but so many coaches backed out tonight. And he's pretty much coaching all the kids at Lake Point right now. Right? I did have pictures. They didn't apparently didn't come up. And it shows all the dibbets that are in the in the field and stuff. But I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment.
Sure.
Couple comments. So one, yeah, I think there's some work to do where the fields hold water to get them to drain better. So
Right.
You know, you don't have to sit out because there are some pretty big things. And I know that Mr. Porter and I have talked about, you know, even just some other things besides the fields that are in that area, whether it's the parking lot and so on and so forth. But I think there's some things that can be done. And two, I think, no, I don't know about, I'm not a grass expert. I mean, I can look in my backyard, and it looks great and fescue. But I know we're playing on Bermuda there. Is that right? So, you know, Bermuda dormant season.
Right.
Playing on, we're playing on dormant grass, which, you know, then doesn't always come stand up. And then it starts growing about now.
Right.
And so we've put some pretty good wear on it during those times. So I think we can we can work with it. But I think we just need to give some attention to it. And I think, too, maybe if we can get the drainage and get then limit some of the play that's on, you know, in the we, you know, we have a park facility for a reason, right, for people to to enjoy the outside. We don't want to be restrictive. But I think at this place where we're we have, what, close to eight hundred children?
That's a lot, yeah. It's always full.
That are involved in this program, which which is a substantial amount of people that are playing on this field. So we need to need to tend to them. So but thanks for contacting us and.
No, absolutely. And I think the better the fields look, the more other counties will want to come to Cartesville to have their tournaments in here. And right now, the last tournament was held. A lot of parents didn't want to play on the field because it was so bad. And it's, you know, and it is played on all the time, all weekends. People are out of there and destroying it. And it never gets time to to breathe and grow.
I think we're, hey, I think I know that is stopped right away.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the signs a lot.
And that should help. And and again, the other thing relative to the water, you know, most a lot of times, and again, a lot of Sam Smith Park is in a floodplain as well. And I know that many moons ago, when my daughter played soccer, the facility in West Cobb that's off of Barrett Parkway, I'm sure that's probably in y'all's rotation of places, too.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of these nice facilities, it's low flat ground. And so you're going to deal with some water there. But certainly, again, my point, thank you for making, you know, we can only fix the problems that we know about.
Sure.
And there was a little bit of a blind spot there. And so we're going to try to fix that moving forward. So I appreciate your advocacy for that. And and you have our, again, we've already put in some of the things into action.
Yes.
And like I said, our new director, Steve Roberts, we're glad to work with you as well.
Perfect. Thank you all. Thank you.
Do you all ever get to play on the field? The is that the just the high school field and the middle school field? Do you ever play on that one?
No, that one, you talking about the one that's it's fenced off close to the middle school? No, it's it's locked up. We're not allowed on that field. Yeah. And that that one is actually perfectly green and
Right.
And cut.
We need to do that to the rest of the.
At least you can look at that while you're playing the other stuff. Got you.
We do that. We need to do that to the other.
Exactly. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anything else needs to come for council this evening? Yeah, absolutely. Step forward. Give your name and your address, please, sir.
My name is Seth Dunn. I live at twenty-four Pembroke. This is Alexandria with me, apparently, who also lives at twenty-four Pembroke. Alexandria is one of the players in the program. I'm one of the coaches of the club. My my kids are on three different teams in the club. And fields five and six specifically are the ones that that we play on. And they're basically just dirt right now. There's no goalie boxes painted on it at all. And I'm sorry, I was late to discussion, getting hurt. I don't want to go over anything you guys have already said. And I think one of the solutions that was talked about was putting the signs up and keeping people off the fields. I actually was over there two weekends ago and threw somebody off myself. I had my SSA shirt on. I didn't really have authority to throw them off, which is what I did.
If they don't.
And they they played right over the signs. And I know they were new. Those signs aren't going to really stop people. Just people will, I suppose. And I know we're still early. So maybe the city official is getting over there. But I think long term, what would be a good idea is at least maybe get some patch of the fields as as a turf field. You don't have to do it all. It would be a really good solution for durability and safety. And just, I think, as the city, if you want to do something, you want to have something, you want to have something nice. The fields, how they've been for the past two seasons are a little like if Aubrey Street had splinters in the floor. That's kind of how our soccer fields look. And I think as I'm glad we have a new rec director. I'm very excited about that. As far as the programs for the city rec in Cartesville, I know this is outsourced. I think it's the best program that we have. And I think it would be a great investment in that. And there's a lot of turf companies around. This is the turf capital of the world, actually, over in Dalton and Calhoun. So it would be a great option. I know a lot of people in our club would get behind it. It'd be great for our city.
Thank you.
I don't know if kids are allowed to talk.
You are allowed to talk. Pull that microphone down there and say what you need to say.
I'm I like I would consider having turf because I my sister, she plays goalie. And every once in a while, he'll put me in goalie, even though I'm like the worst at it. His fault. And it's kind of hard to see the goalie box. So a lot of times, kids are always getting called on handballs because they can't see the goalie box. And they're like thinking about the position instead of like an inch or two out of it or inside of it and stuff like that. And that's how it and it's really confusing, especially to us kids. And also, the dirt is very distracting because kids like to sit down and start picking up the dirt and throwing it. My sister does that, too. And it'd also be better because a lot of times, sometimes, you know, when girls are shouldering each other, fighting for the ball, some people get pushed down. And turf is a lot softer than a lot than the dirty grass. And it would also help not staining uniforms.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you talking to us tonight.
And I would be more than happy to get you guys some samples. I actually work for a turf company. So.
I just heard donation. I don't know about that.
Seriously, I did talk to our salesman, and he could work with us. I'd have to use my favors, but I would do it.
Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Robert Morgan, twenty-two Gray Road. I actually was not going to speak. I just came to first meeting ever. My daughter plays the SSA. The irrigation, too, whoever I need to be looked at.
Okay.
Updated the clocks out of.
All right. We'll take a look at that.
The pressure.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me your name again? I'm sorry.
Robert Morgan.
Thank you.
When they did the new saw was out there, and the lot of the heads were just barely, I mean, it wasn't getting a lot of water or anything like that. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Robert. Good to see you. Anything else needs to come for council tonight? I'll only make a note that the baseball playoffs start Monday. Cartesville's ranked first, and they'll start playing a doubleheader on Monday. And hopefully, a long run from there. Woodland, our neighbors, are also the number two seed out of the region. So they'll be playing at home on Monday as well. A lot of opportunities to watch local baseball. Dersville's in the playoffs as well. So that being said, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Stay gold.